All right, everybody ready? Qualifying the order. Who stands to pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion for our open meeting.
I, yeah, that's.
First and second. The first and second, all members say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. The, uh, Open Meetings Act is hanging on the door back there. Here to read that. Roll call. Deb?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Tramps?
Here.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself here. I'll turn this over to Dr. Earl now, and you're gonna.
Yep.
You know.
Yep, we'll, uh, have new member Melissa Dorr, uh, just stand and recite the oath which we have for policy. Uh, so it's, it's that simple. We've all done it, so. Melissa?
I'm Melissa Dorr. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to do the same, and that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for the purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the Plainview School District Board of Education according to the law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates to overthrow the government of the United States or by this state by force or violence. And that during such a time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help me God.
Okay, at this time, we'll, uh, accept nominations for President and the Board, uh, for 2023 calendar year.
I like Tim. Or nominate him.
Tim Rasmussen?
Tim Rasmussen.
Any other nominations? Mike Sauer. If I'm qualified, already had it. Other nominations from the Board? Hearing none. Uh, with Tim Rasmussen, Mike Sauer. So vote for one. Fold in half, please.
Three, three.
Okay, vote again. Tim Rasmussen, Mike Sauer.
Any more on Board? Any champagne? Have one where you're the other?
Yeah, no problem.
I'd like to not.
I'll be fine, let's see.
We get fifteen votes this year.
Really? Okay. Well, we can continue.
That means a no. That means a no, obviously.
Well, possible.
I don't know what it means, though. We have to pick another person.
Did you ever have a time? Well.
It's like choosing a speaker. They think it's.
I'm trying to give it up. It doesn't bother me to give it up, so.
Finally, it was my case.
Okay?
Like I said, I would like another year or two of the screen. Other last year.
Tim Rasmussen, four two.
Tim Rasmussen?
Tim Rasmussen, four two.
Tim Rasmussen. Uh, congratulations. Okay? Uh, now, Jordan, the meeting over to you.
All right.
Uh, and for nomination of Vice President and then, um, Treasurer of the Board, essentially, Kelly's the Secretary of the Board, um, but, but for Vice President.
All right, well, I guess you're gonna put up with some mistakes here. I'll do my best. Um, I'll open it up for nominations in for Vice President.
I'll nominate Mike Sauer.
Mike's been nominated. Any others?
I'll nominate Wyatt.
Wyatt? Another nomination? Okay, if not, we'll take a vote.
Someone just said all the names on here, and you stand back down.
You know the national championship game would be the place, right, guys? When they say it's three, three. Well, qualified.
Good job, Kelly.
Three, three.
Okay. I got plenty of paper.
All right, I got two.
Speaker took seventeen times.
Do you want to say it?
I wouldn't get back for it. I told you, we'd be in the raw paper scissors. Well, we need a mic.
Oh. I watched that.
From, from my point of view.
I'm afraid my beard would be bad.
Okay, I can up early, so.
Okay, I know. I'm fine, I'm, I'm giving it up. It's fine.
Maybe if I could help Tim out any.
Yep. So, can I? Let's see what I've got. That's probably Wyatt.
And Tim, your meetings run long.
Mike Sauer, four two.
All right. The person that signs checks with the President and the Superintendent, so Treasurer?
Yep. That's all I do is help the secretary.
Okay.
Might be a little more progress.
Okay, we've got, uh, President, Vice President, now we need nominations for Secretary of Treasury.
I know.
I nominated last. I don't, I don't think so. You had it, you're here.
Any others?
I'll nominate myself.
Okay?
Okay. Okay. Okay, if there are no more, we'll take a vote for Secretary of Treasury.
Looks like it's Deb Jensen. Deb had three, Chance had one, and Wyatt has two.
Write it off.
Last one. They did say that, I didn't.
Well, congratulations, Deb.
Well, thank you.
Thanks to Mike. No, that's fine. I don't say it right here, that's all. We'll, we'll do next. Next one. Thanks to Mike for all the years of sort of present on the board. Another year to honor, but that's the way it goes.
Right.
And thanks to the other people who put their names in for the other officers. So, all right, next up, we're gonna approve the agenda for tonight. I don't think we have any additions or anything we can change. It all looks all right. We'll take a motion to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second half. As we move to second, approve the agenda. One by one, Mike?
Uh, just on the action items, see if some of these up here we just did.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carried. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Starting with the minutes from last week. Questions on the minute, we can move on to the financials.
Doc called. Do you have an extra copy of the agenda? Extra cop line, I don't have a question.
I have one. What are the questions on the table?
That's beautiful.
Yeah, I can get it on my internet.
Chance, I can share with. I can share with.
I can get it.
I'm not. I can get it on the.
Did you win?
Danny, did you win? Did you guys win?
Yeah.
All right, good job.
Oh, she walked away.
Turned around real fast.
Any questions on the financials, we'll move on to the claims then. Is that another, another bus go down?
Yeah. Another student bus repair. It, it was one of our, you know, highly used ones in the fleet, so, you know, we had to get it back on the road. I look, when I signed a check today, I looked over the bill, and it was, uh, they had to do a couple, two, three different things. They fixed one thing, and they'd go out and drive it and check engine might come on for something else, and when they'd fix that, and then they'd put a water pump in it. Majority of those labor, they had to tear a lot of stuff off to fix what they had to fix. So. Don't take much.
No, not a place like that.
Any other questions or comments and terms? Not on the current motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, stated.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, accept the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carried.
I have a question. Uh, I think I speak with a new year last month. There was a vote to extend a contract, and I didn't see that in the agenda anywhere. Did I miss it somewhere?
In the minutes?
Minutes? For the contractor.
With the terms to be.
Um, right here, it's on number twenty.
Yeah.
On the agenda. Are you looking, is that what you're asking?
It's in the minutes.
Oh, I guess it was last, but.
Yeah, we just sent this contract, but not.
Terms to be discussed next minute.
It's in terms. Oh, okay.
It's over. Okay?
Thanks.
All right, uh, next up is student presentation by Miss Allison Horst.
Schmidt?
Get after it, Horst.
Okay, so.
You want your video?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll get it for you. You can explain what you were doing for her.
Okay, so basically, um, I plan on going to the University of Nebraska in Lincoln and majoring in sports media and marketing. So I've been going to the news office with Brooke, and he's helped me, um, put a little video together. It's not finished yet, there's a lot of work to go, but this is a rough draft of what I have so far.
So, the colors of your school.
Dr. Earl here, Superintendent, Plainview Public Schools. I can see, hear, and feel the positive energy, uh, that is exhibited from our staff and the optimistic can-do spirit, uh, that we try to exhibit every day. I believe our teachers are passionate about their lessons, but I believe they're even more passionate about their students. And it's those emotional connections, those relationships, that make PHS so special.
That's really good, Allison.
That was very good.
Obviously, that would be something to help us with, with marketing and, and, uh, you know, just, uh, obviously, it's just gonna be, you know, a couple of minute clip, but that's about the attention span of anybody anymore. Uh, but that's well done and, and comes through her work-based learning experience, and, and so, uh, obviously, they like to show off the things that their students are doing, and Allison's among the best.
Good, Allison.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. So anybody that wants to, any comments tonight?
I was just gonna say thanks for volunteering to run and congrats on your elections and reelections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else, we'll, can you move on then? Move on to review Board policy, starting two oh two, oh one, two, and three.
It is, uh, several things that happened in January Board meetings, really across the state, um, and one of them is, uh, recommended to review, uh, the two oh two series. So again, it's, it's primarily also because you, every Board mayor, may or may not have new Board members, but, uh, kind of bring, uh, new Board members along and for all Board members to, um, refresh themselves with certain specific quality, policies. These ones with regard to, um, two oh two code of ethics, uh, responsibilities, relationship with superintendent plays, cooperation with other school boards, uh, liability, conflict of interest. So, obviously, would be very important things for Board members to, to be aware of, uh, as, as they, as they serve the school district.
No recommendations or changes?
No, not, not at all, Tim, just, um, just wanted to be before your eyes.
Good information, you read this once a year.
Again, you, I, I guess put a copy of the, uh, conflict of interest statement to the Nebraska, from the Nebraska Accountability Disclosure Commission. I don't know that this is necessary because I don't anticipate that the Board intends to do business with any of you and your private businesses. If, um, if you were, any of you were involved in contracting for, uh, construction firms or, you know, on the concrete business or something, and the school district was potentially gonna do business with you, um, a disclosure statement would, would be necessary. So I, I gave you all a copy of that. Uh, I suppose we can, we can talk about it further or decide if that's something that needs to be done. You know, Mr. Rasmussen, you might, you know, recommend, you know, next month for, for folks maybe to, to complete one. We haven't in the past, but we, we've never anticipated that it was necessary.
I don't think they're in all the folders. Mr. Sauer didn't have one either, just Melissa.
Unless you, unless I took it out, because I got my folder the other night.
Oh, she did not have.
You did, okay.
Oh, no, I didn't do that.
You probably are.
You did. Sorry, Dr. Earl.
I don't, I don't know if I took mine out at home, because I have a folder the other night, because I don't have one.
So, Mr. Rasmussen, I don't know, you, you wanna consider that, and we can discuss it between now and next meeting and push out whether it's.
I don't perceive that being a problem.
You don't really need to do this just for having a family member being a.
No.
Employee.
Nope, that's, yeah. 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 It's for district, it's, it's district monies, if you'd be making decisions by district monies, that would, uh, go to a family business.
Something like that comes up. Anything else on those?
No.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, Board Development.
It was a little more of a hefty read, uh, you no doubt recognize, even though the, the last several pages were, were a lot of scenarios, um, that may or may not be, be relevant. But, uh, I thought certainly for the first meeting of the year with new Board member, um, you know, some basics about Board meetings, Board minutes, uh, contents, uh, of agendas and how that works. So, uh, and then the bullet points are pretty good, I think, oh, one fifty-two and one fifty-three, um, which I think could be helpful and probably good for, uh, for every Board member to think about and consider. And I think, I think they're, well, I think they're reasonable, um, to help, uh, to consider to, to have, you know, efficient and effective, uh, Board meetings. So, so those bullet points are good on one fifty-two and one fifty-three in particular, I think.
What class, school, district are we?
We're three.
Three? I'm glad you're not the Secretary of a larger school. Yep.
Can you talk about Mark who's? That one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of good information in there. Everybody have any other points they took away from it? Want to discuss?
I like this one, that's my Board member responsibilities. I like those. You're like a magnet.
Yep. Well, good things to be reminded of.
And it's good to look at them every year, too. This is a great time. More members coming on, and for the rest of us, has been on for ten years, and you need to read them every year, remind you.
Yeah, it gave us quite a bit to read.
Are they still doing the webinars for you, the new Board members, Melissa? Because this is, you know, Dr. Earl, are they doing the webinars for this one?
Yeah, they, and they had a, a full day meeting on Wednesday in Norfolk, uh, which, you know, is a tough schedule. So, the binder encapsulates really.
Yeah, but she goes through all of that, just with you, and kind of explains everything. They're helpful, but they're helpful.
I don't know, they still do it that way, because pre-COVID, they do this to meet in Norfolk, and then COVID went to the.
So, yeah.
This was more detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, they put it a lot more.
We'll have a regional meeting in Norfolk, which will be a mail-in, two hours, and, you know, networking and such. Your, your big, uh, state school board conference the week before, uh, Thanksgiving is always very valuable. So you have about, you know, three good opportunities to have some face-to-face, uh, you know, Board development. But most all of it comes from, you know, the, the resource that you, that you have before you, so, um, so it's, um, it, it's pretty good. I mean, it's not as good as face-to-face, just like virtual learning, it's not as good as being in the classroom with your teacher, but.
Okay.
Is there a live stream? Yeah. This is kind of the one that helps.
Well, we'll move on then to report by Budget Committee. They meant to kind of go detail further after talking about Dr. Earl's terms of contract, a little more detail. Mike or Wyatt, do you guys want to? Or the rest of the Board, what we talked about?
Well, we talked about this a little bit last meeting, that Dr. Earl would like to get his cash in lieu lowered and add it onto his salary, because his retirement is based off his salary. And, and we can do that without any additional cost to the district. It would be a benefit for him, and, and if we do it right, it would be equal to cost to us. So that's what we talked about, and he's been, he's been on, uh, seventy-five percent in lieu of a family, and would like to go down to sixty percent this year, and eventually like to get down to fifty. So there would be another, another adjustment coming down the road. So what we tried to do is, is look at the total package as being around that three percent or less. And so we came up with was a five point zero two percent increase on his salary. And then his in lieu would go from, his value was nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that would go down to sixteen thousand, five hundred. So, so his total, and if we gave him a total overall salary increase, not salary, total, total compensation increase would be a two point seven percent overall raise a year. And that is allowing, it should be a hundred, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred for the salary, and then when you add in sixteen, five, it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand total compensation. And that allows in some, because we match retirement and taxes, so it allows in us paying a little more because his salary's a little bit higher. So it, it, it recompensates us for paying some extra taxes at retirement.
Like him going down?
Well, his salary's gonna go up, and he pays.
His salary for his benefit.
His benefit will go down, his salary will go up, and we have to match retirement on his salary. So our. his salary. So our cost on the salary will go up a little.
Right.
A few hundred dollars.
Right.
So this is lowering the overall package.
So we'll come out.
Roughly five hundred dollars. Yeah. So so we try to make it be a wash. So we try to make it be a wash. So.
How are we going to do it going forward? Because we're going to have a bigger base salary to do freezes off of.
Right, right. Yeah, and it'll make a couple hundred dollars difference a year. I mean, the difference.
And where does that couple hundred dollars come from? Does that come from tax dollars? Will the tax levy go up further?
It all depends upon what you give him for a raise next time. If you give him.
Can you talk about this time this year?
This year it won't really make a difference. We've compensated all that in. He's getting less salary to help pay for more retirement and taxes. Okay? So it's still costing us the same thing. Now, next year, when you look at his salary, again, you'll have to take that into consideration on what you want, whoever's in that meeting wants to give him for a raise.
Trying to look at the total compensation versus just looking at the salary?
Because we're just looking at one year salary. So we're locking in right here. So next year, we'll have to say both. That's what you're raising for the next year.
We did, we negotiated down just a little bit to take care of that extra cost of the school. But we're going to end up paying for FICA Medicare and retirement.
So taxes and pension.
Trying to account for that. Originally, he requested a three point one six percent increase in total compensation and negotiated down to two point seven four seven. The additional, like Mike said, the additional hundred dollars anyway, will be about eight hundred and forty-three hundred, eight hundred and forty-three dollars anyway. That is going to be used to offset the cost of FICA and the end person pension contribution by the increase in the salary. So this is actually costing the district a little less than what would be, we're just going to give them just a flat three point one six percent increase in salary. So probably save a little bit. I do it this way. Does that make sense? When you look back at the last two years, he was at four point three percent and then four point two percent. So this year, we're looking at two point seven percent in total compensation. I don't remember exactly what the average was over the last, you know, five or six years, but.
Average per year was right at three percent since sixteen seventeen.
Any questions as to how we came up with that? Now, we'll move on to that further down on the agenda. All right, number sixteen, discuss and take possible action readoption of existing policy regulations and handbooks as per policy two oh three oh one.
So your your policy two oh three oh one, last paragraph states, "The board shall pass a resolution for readoption of all existing policies and regulations and handbooks for the governance of the district." So that's to accommodate, you know, any new member that comes on. So for an opportunity for the full board to again show support for existing things that we're living within right now, policies, handbooks, and budgets. But obviously, you know, policies can change according to board action. But this is just a reoperation by the board for policies, handbooks, and budget that we're living under right now.
Continue doing what we've been doing.
Yep, yeah. Which again doesn't prohibit you from making decisions or adjustments about governance moving forward.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to readopt all existing policies, regulations, and handbooks governing and providing direction for plenty of public schools for the current school year.
Second? Second. My wife. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Chance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa? Motion carried. Move on to number six zero. That's why I need to handle. Number seventeen. Look at discussing taking possible action according to Darren Arlton as the district's non-discrimination compliance coordinator as per policy two oh three oh one, board organizational meeting.
It says in that policy, "The board shall also appoint a superintendent or another qualified employee as the district's non-discrimination compliance coordinator for the year to meet federal equal employment opportunity requirements." So it doesn't have to be, it may have to be another qualified employee.
Secretary.
Don't be looking at me like you're something else. I'm going to make this motion quickly. I'll make a motion to approve appointment, Dr. Darren Arlton, state federal government.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Move the second in. Vote. Chance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Motion carried six oh. They're in the past. More unorganized, so. Everybody have a copy of that? Those were the committees that we've had in place last year. I see Dr. Thor's on those blank ones. If there's anybody that would like to, you know, certainly create on this one, you know.
I'll jump on in the negotiations. Mostly because I was already on. And I don't need to be on this one, but I just want to say on the negotiations during every year, sort of depend upon who's on that committee and how long they plan on being on the board. There's a leader in negotiations. One person talks on each side. So it's good to have some experience. Haven't been done that before. And so if you don't have anybody on there, you know, after an election, if all the people that were on there go off, you have three new people on that committee, it's a little tougher because you have no clue what's going on. So we will have one more negotiation with teachers before the next election. So there will be three of you that will still be on after that election. So I recommend that at least one of you three be on that committee now for the next negotiations. Because if the other three of us don't rerun, one person at least has some experience. Because none of you have been on that committee at this point.
Melissa, Tim, and Wyatt, am I correct?
Right.
Because we were in the same year.
So and if Chance, I mean, if Chance wants on, I can get off. But if us three are all on that committee, which Deb and I are on right now, three years, two years, we could all three possibly go off and there will be no experience on that committee whatsoever. So that's probably one of the more important committees to have. So I'm just saying, you know, if if Chance wants on there, I can get off. I've been on it for quite a while. So if, you know, one of you three went on there. Deb's been on, she's got experience.
She's once though.
Your committees to assign. Did you want to choose? So will this be the one I have to go ahead, Tim? Yeah, I probably will. Not making a decision tonight, but if you guys, if somebody has a strong feeling, one or another, just let me know. You want to be on, I'll listen. You might have some ideas or words you'd like to.
I would like to have a budget.
Budget?
Budget.
Just take your name.
Another thing you can look at too, is some of these you can get by with two members.
You can.
Yeah, you don't have to.
You don't have to.
Because some of them don't really ever meet, you know, because American has them once.
We meet twice.
Twice, yeah.
Twice a year.
I guess if you've been on that one, I don't know if you still.
Technology would be a good example. Once a year. And Tom pretty much just told us what he wants.
Or the advisory. I don't think we've ever met on the advisory.
Um, did we meet with Kyle? Was that advisory?
I thought that was teaching and learning.
Was that teaching or advisory?
Teaching and learning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the policy, we've never, I've only been involved in writing a new policy once since I've been on the board. So.
I would like to stay on the teaching and learning.
That's only once a year.
Or defense.
Just when we had to change some graduation.
Obviously, budget probably beats the most out of all those. Negotiations is a very important one, but.
Building grounds is kind of over the hump.
Yeah, building grounds did meet a lot. Haven't been a lot recently. I think we're kind of getting wrapped up on those projects.
Don't say that.
Let's hope.
You can take me off technology.
You can be off that one.
I can do it.
You can put my name by the building and grounds if you want. It's a consideration. I would also like to be part of the consideration for budget. I don't care if I get on or not, but.
It's probably wherever. Just don't add me anymore.
Don't add me. I'll work something up. Come back with that for you next month. All right. Okay, move on to nineteen. Discuss and take possible action on review of the district's state return school plan. This year, we have to be on record as reviewing. So I'll give you a copy there. Just changed dates today. The last time it's been reviewed has to be accessible on our website. So this still exists. This is tied to our federal funds, our ESSR dollars. So in ESSR dollars, for a couple more years before they have to be obligated and spent. So a couple times a year, we're going to update the date on this and have an have it be an action item, have it be in our minutes that it's been quote-unquote reviewed. It doesn't not obligate us anything that's outdated, obviously, arguably unnecessary. But as far as the Fed's concerned, it must still exist.
You have to vote on that, or?
Yeah.
Just a simple view.
That changes us. I'll make a motion to approve the school district's state return school plan for the spring semester of twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Do you have a second? Second. Although, Chance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
That motion carried six oh. We'll move on to number twenty. Discuss take possible action on the contract terms for Dr. Darren Arlton, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. That's kind of what we discussed there in the budget report. I think what we're. What we're looking at was a five point oh two increase in salary for total compensation increase of two point seven four seven percent.
So the two numbers.
Was one fifty-one, five hundred salary, and then we decrease his cash in lieu or his health insurance down to sixteen thousand five hundred. Total package is one sixty-eight.
And just, you know, for clarification, it's the end person pension is only on salary. And so so yes, if the salary goes up, the district contribution to end person will go up. Your FICA is based on total compensation. So the FICA is no different. In fact, the district might be saving money on FICA because we're looking at the two point seven four increase, whereas previous years it's been four percent plus. So that would have been a higher FICA contribution. So those may somewhat be washed. I mean, so this, you know, is better for the district and it's better for for my retirement where the pension dollars come from Nebraska, you know, not from the school district. So so there is that minimal increased expense in district contribution to end person. But FICA's on total compensation. So and that's a smaller percentage than it's been in the past couple years. And so I appreciate you considering that because that's that's definitely a better circumstance for, you know, age sixty beyond.
So could this lead to other employees at some point, you know, teachers' retirement is based the same way, correct? Are they going to start? Of course, they have to go by the union so they can't come out individually and want to say, I want to change my.
Get a collection of, yeah, thirty, thirty-four FTE that collectively bargain.
And how many years until you retire?
Well, that's probably between you and that I reach full benefit retirement at age sixty. Minimum age is fifty-five, but I have ten years out of end person. And you get two points for every year. So I have to go five additional years to max to reach the rule of eighty-five, as they call it. So so five more years is when I'll reach full retirement.
They determined his retirement by his last three years' salaries.
So from a business standpoint, that would be three years of asking for a raise.
Yeah, I mean, and that's natural anyway for everybody's last three years to their highest three years.
Well, that's just, that's business.
Yeah.
But not everybody's in this situation.
Yeah.
So.
Any other comments, questions about what we're proposing here?
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the contract terms for the twenty-two, three, twenty, twenty-four Dr. Darren Arlton, ten has read.
Do you have a second?
Second.
You have the numbers.
Okay, whatever. I'll go to.
Well, don't ask him.
Wyatt just now.
You got a second?
I have.
Wyatt has.
Wyatt, did you second that?
Sure, I seconded.
But yes, I do have the numbers.
You got the numbers, all right.
Well, we'll go ahead and vote then. Chance?
No.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
No.
Okay, we got it. Four two, motion is carried. And we'll move on to number twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal in terms for Mrs. Jen Hodgson, twenty-two, three, twenty, twenty-four school year. Do you have information?
Wasn't you want to do salary or do you just want to offer contracts?
I think we'll just offer contracts tonight. It was on the agenda with that terms to be discussed next month.
Yeah, certainly my recommendation, completed both of their evaluations, were very well served by by Colin Jen in both buildings and their collegiality among themselves is makes them each better administrator. So indispensable, invaluable. I recommend that they both achieve contract renewal school year.
I'll make a motion that we approve a contract for Mrs. Hodgson for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year.
I'll second. Second to Ms. Hodgson, contract stand for next year. Chance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
We'll move on to twenty-two, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal terms for Mr. Kyle Schmidt for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll make a motion that we approve a contract renewal for Mr. Schmidt for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second? Second to accept Mr. Schmidt's contract for next year. Chance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Discuss the terms next month. Move on to the activity director's report.
Junior high sports are switching, so meaning that we're starting boys basketball. Boys wrestling is over. To give you an update, I reached out to our conference athletic directors to see about starting junior high girls wrestling being after Christmas and dividing those two some high school split. being after Christmas and dividing those two some high school split. Most of them are not in favor of that, just because everybody has one or two girls out right now, but I wanted to start the discussion. I've looked at Midstates and East Husker as well, just to see where they're at, and they're all at just kind of the starting point of it, so. Just to give you a heads up on what that might look like someday. By the next time we meet, conference basketball and wrestling will be done, girls' district basketball will be done, and district bowling will be done, so. We got a lot going on here in the next month. Heads up, in March, we will be hosting district speech on March eighth, so that's the Wednesday before spring break. I don't know when the last time was we hosted district speech. Been a while, so. Been working with Mrs. Mosel, and I know she's excited to host it, so we'll get rolling on that. And then, like I talked to you last month about some equipment things with football, next month I'll have to bring some uniforms and just quotes on things because we don't have enough, and let you guys make a decision on some things just because of the numbers and influx that we have coming up, so. That's kind of where we're at with everything right now, so.
How many girls do we have out, just curious?
We have two girls in junior high right now, and they're both eighth graders, so they'll be moving up to high school. And I don't know, they just started youth wrestling tonight, so I was going to talk to Kate and then see if there was any girls that showed up.
I know my daughter did. I swear.
I know it's going to be growing. High school wise, it's doubled in.
Yeah, I know it's just taking off. But is this Play-Doh, do we have girls wrestlers?
Not in the high school.
We don't.
Nope.
And the two girls that are coming into high school, they will be very competitive.
So that's what Dean and I have already been talking about, our tournament and girls being separate. There's going to be some change in coming up with that sport here in the future.
The state tournament is already split, so we can make a scene. Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, on to the principals' report. There's just two things that we've had a few discussions on recently, and so I just wanted to bring those to your attention. Crystal, Dr. Alt, myself, as well as our advisory committee have been talking about ways to provide more opportunities for our preschool students. And so in those discussions, we're just looking at how can we best serve the students that we have? Is there a way that we can look at a three-year-old program? And so in the last two months per se, we've had several conversations and also having conversations with the Department of Ed, asking what resources are there for us to support something like this, if we were to make any changes. In our conversations, it's just strictly discussion and conversations. We have, we don't have a specific plan in mind. We're just trying to come up with ways to be, serve more preschool students that we have in our district. So I just wanted to bring that to you. If there are any specific questions you have, you are more than welcome to ask myself, Mrs. Hoffman, or Dr. Alt, but we are looking at things that we can do to expand our preschool program.
So you'd like to do something for next school year, you're hoping, or?
Well, our hopes were really high until we talked to the ND people because we were seeking out grant funding. And when they told us that they primarily serve four-year-old programs, the best option for that was expanding our four-year-old program, and so we just have not brainstormed the best way of doing that yet. Initially, we went into it thinking, oh, let's try and add a three-year-old program. Well, we understand the funding is a major concern, and being able to staff a teacher or even a para on our own is not realistic. So when we learned that, then we had to be more creative with how we pursue this and what road we go down with this particular topic.
Could you just call it a young four and an old four?
The age discrepancy has been one way that we've talked about, how could we divide them and serve more.
You could conceivably, Chance, I mean, Crystal and Jen could, because we have a morning, we have an A and a P. AM could be the little littles, and you know, so, and there can be some benefit to that, quite honestly, so I mean, it's, it's not a.
Well, there's got to be some gray areas, government things.
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, as Jen said, we're just kind of doing some homework, and we're seeing, you know, if there's a way to get things paid for where we can serve more kids, but it's, it's a bit of a long shot at this point, because, you know, personnel is going to be a significant expense, and you know, we'd certainly bring that to the board, but I don't know that I would recommend assuming any significant additional expense to do it. Especially since we have three-year-old preschool in town already, so they are served, or three-year-olds are served in this community, or they have the option to be served, so.
Anything else?
The only other thing that I was going to mention to you with playground stuff is I reached out to our elementary kids and kind of got their input. We received a quote a month or two ago, and I showed it to our JPT team, and the lady that presented the quote told us that this is kind of some of the newest equipment out there, but it was pretty high, like our initial thought was that's taller than we want it to be. So now we're just kind of looking at, okay, if we were to pick certain elements of the structure itself, what do our kids want the most? And so that's kind of redirected our direction with what specific pieces we are pursuing, so. That's the next step that we're going to take with, just seeking another option, and then hopefully within the next month or two, we can generate a couple different options for you guys to look at.
You better hurry, the kids that raised all this money are going to be in high school.
Well, you know what? One company that I reached out to, they told me twelve to eighteen months even to get the equipment shipped. So then we were like, okay, we're not going to do any business with that one, so. And then he referred me to another one, so there's three different outfits that we're kind of talking to right now.
You got another fundraiser Friday night?
We do, yep. We are, we're excited about that.
The chili, I mean, the soup.
We're going to do taverns this time around.
Are you getting close to your goal?
Well, our goal was two hundred thousand, so a hundred and twenty-five is kind of where we're sitting at right now. And I just, we'll keep plugging away at it until we make that final decision.
A hundred of that hundred and twenty-five is your contribution?
Correct.
In this year's fiscal budget.
That's pretty good, though, you came up with twenty-five thousand.
Well, and even our little pie thing that we did in the month of December.
Who won that?
Hmm, I think it was her.
That one got pie, right? That one got pie?
No.
No?
That one did.
Got pie.
It was great entertainment, so if you missed out on it, check out the Play-Doh YouTube page. We recorded it. The kids enjoyed every bit of it, so it was all worth it.
Do you guys get like donations for the hamburger, or?
We, we did seek out. Do you want to make some more?
Sure. I have like probably freaking four hundred pounds of hamburger in my freezer. When do you want it?
Tomorrow. Thought. It's not going to be bad.
Okay, well, thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, I just.
Sorry. I had nothing prepared.
I got something for you. I told Chance last week, he asked about the, what we're going to do with these books. We talked about making decisions on these books, so I said, you have the president's report if I was president. So if you want to talk about that.
So always certainly. What do you guys, I mean, like most, like consensus has been to do something digital, so we don't follow along with all these pages.
So this is a lot, being here, this is a lot. The digital would be great.
What we got to take to?
Maybe not much. I mean, let me have a conversation with Mr. Sauer tomorrow. Tom, I would guess that we would have six quality used laptops that could serve this purpose for your digital communication, your email. Our policies are all found on the website, and we can make it even more accessible on laptop agendas. Though Kelly already pushes those out to you every Thursday, so you do receive those, and whether you receive them on your phone, or if you have a PC at home, whatever, but let me check. I would guess that maybe we would have a half a dozen used laptops. I know we will in a year, as Tom reported a couple of months ago. We're going to be able to replace all our Teacher Max with federal funds, you know, coming up, so. I'll, I'll talk with you, Tim, between now and next month on what we have.
Is it something we could do on our phones?
Oh, I, I, I think that's up to you. It's just to be able to.
You're not thinking of like making us take a laptop home, are you?
No, that's Tim.
No, I just want one to sit.
Having a file on, or it's on file, and then if, maybe at the meeting. Maybe at the meeting, the policies we discussed, we could get printed out, and then when there's changes, it just goes into the online.
Why couldn't we just have it, if we're going to discuss something, just project it on that?
Yeah.
You know?
So everybody can see it. If you would have it where they're making notes on it, I would say, I think I can see it.
Some people prefer pencil and paper, yeah, and, you know, so it's.
I'll keep my book. I'll keep my book, it will stay in home in the garage.
I think that's what gets me the most, is just updating all the pages, you know, from my habit of the book that it's just.
That's the pain of policy review, right, is getting nine times out of ten, or maybe more often than that, you get a new copy of a policy which just has a new date on it, language is still the same. So you can almost conceivably just write, handwrite the date in rather than have to put a new copy in.
Then when you're looking forward to, you can just type in search, you know. Find policy two oh three point one.
Well, if you want to come up with some options, then.
Sure.
Yeah, otherwise they don't have anything. I just hope you guys put up with me. I've got a lot of learning to do, and just correct me if I'm doing something wrong. I'm sure I would. Thanks for putting your trust in. Hope it goes well. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Mr. Schmidt, would you, you're tall, would you fire that up fully, please, thank you. First thing I just, I just mentioned, kudos to Jen Hodgson, she doesn't do anything halfway, and so when she does it, it's, it's full effect, and so her little pie thing was, was really, really positive and good, and just that, that was just one example of, of when she wants to do something, it's, it's never halfway, so. And kids, kids love that. Most kids love that, and they see that and appreciate that, so. I wanted to give you an update on, you know, snow days, I'll, you know, we're, we're well over what we had last year. We had one snow day and one late start last year. This year, we're up to four snow days and one late start. I'll keep you updated, and at some point in time, you may ask me, well, are we good for hours? Your, your decision is always based on, you know, teacher contract days. It's not necessarily about student days, because that goes by hours, as you know. So we're, we're fine, but I certainly want to keep you updated on that. And there's your Esser update. So we have a thousand and one dollars left of Esser two, and that will be consumed. We'll spend that and be reimbursed for that this, later this summer. We have a hundred and four thousand, a hundred and four one oh three in Esser three. Most of that will, will, will reimburse after the August payroll, so we've got that additional teacher paid through August. And so we'll request reimbursement for that entire expense, and that will eat up most of that, plus summer school, which our summer school, which we've done for two summers now, we've used federal funds for that, is about a twenty-plus thousand dollar expense. So we do intend to do that again this summer, twenty twenty-three. We will have enough money to do that again in twenty twenty-four. But then we look to be, have fully expended all of our, all our COVID money, which is our Esser money. So certainly wanted to keep you updated on that. The chemical cleanup is still a work in progress, still trying to get that scheduled. I did hear from them. And we're, I was hoping that it was going to be done over break, but it wasn't, so just wanted to keep you updated on that. They want to do it at a time ideally when no students are in the building. That makes, you know, kind of sense, because they're going to come in in full hazmat and do that, which doesn't make me feel any better, that Mr. Schmidt and I were just passing these things around as we were. We're probably okay. Mrs. Jensen, were you there? The April meeting, want you to think ahead and visit with Mr. Raspus, and we have a potential conflict that night, only because that's the Monday, there's no school that day, it's the Monday of Easter. So whether that's a conflict, I don't know, but just wanted to, you know, looking ahead just a little bit. Staff update, as you know, we hired Mrs. Kraus to fill in this last year. We, we are, we were not able to fill that band position for this school year. We, we shared a teacher from Osmond for a few hours for this first semester, and now Ms. Beagle's going to take over those duties that, that Mrs. Gin was responsible for, which was essentially elementary band. So Ms. Beagle, as you know, we hired her as a vocal teacher, she took on the high school band, Mrs. Kraus took on the elementary vocal. So we're advertising for instrumental music again, to move Ms. Beagle to full vocal, K-12. So if we're fortunate enough to get an instrumental music teacher, you know, they'll assume a couple of elementary vocals possibly, and then our four twelve instrumental. There's a lot of schools in Nebraska looking for music teachers. We do happen to be at this point in time, unless it's changed since yesterday, and it could, we're the only school district in northeast Nebraska that's looking specific for instrumental music. It may be good or helpful if somebody's looking for a northeast Nebraska instrumental music position. So, so we're looking. I do have an interview, a Zoom interview with a candidate from the Philippines on Wednesday who, who's applied, done some, done some research, seen some of his work. We'll see where that goes. It'll be seven AM his time, five PM our time. We're going to Zoom, have a conversation, you know, he wants to come to America and teach fluent. So we, we have an app, and I will probably, we will probably interview or visit with, with every app we get. We'll see. So up on the screen, I wanted to share this with you. There's new, this is a national campaign, and I want to just play this quick twenty-five second video to start. Okay, so there's a national campaign going on that's designed purely to try to change the narrative a little bit about the field of education and the teaching profession. Is primarily what we see is that it's, it's not awesome, that it's not rewarding, you can't make a living doing it, so consequently, as you know, there's a teacher shortage. The teacher pool is very shallow nationwide. We're affected by it here in Nebraska, just as as they're experiencing really across the nation, and so the Who Taught You campaign is designed to, as you saw right there, to have people think about who taught them, because most people think and feel fondly about their school experience, and they can think of one, two, or several teachers that made an impact on them, and oftentimes, that's all it takes. That's all it takes. We, we probably all had teachers that probably didn't influence us, and that we didn't think was a good teacher, whatever. But we certainly all had multiple teachers from K to twelve where that, that person changed my. And so we think more fondly of the profession of teaching, and so we're, you're trying to appeal to folks just to, just to change the conversation, to have a positive conversation about the field of education and about teachers, okay? And so just this, this little paragraph right here. And so this is, this national campaign is, has been being created by Just Jump Films. The team behind Who Taught You is a film production and social impact studio responsible for the successful I Love Schools campaign. And we're all familiar with the I Love Public Schools campaign. This was purely a Nebraska campaign over the past twelve years, but they lost their funding. And so I Love Public Schools is going away. And I Love Public Schools has done a tremendous service to public education in Nebraska over the past decade plus. But they're going away, and the Who Taught You campaign, just somewhat coincidentally, is coming in on the heels of I Love Public Schools, only the Who Taught You campaign is a national campaign. We specialize in stories about education, society's greatest opportunity for investment in our future. Over time, we've witnessed the growing commitment and passion of educators, while at the same time, watching the erosion of public respect and value for those who educate our children. Who Taught You engages individuals in recalling influential teachers, resulting in their renewed appreciation and respect for those currently in the field and those considering entering. Together, we can celebrate the profession that makes all others possible. So when I think about Who Taught You, I think about Ms. Brager, and I think about Mrs. Crisp, and I think about Dr. Lipti, and Mr. and Mrs. Tassmeyer, and Mr. Knock, and Mr. Dorr, and Coach Moller, and Mrs. Mills, uh, and and several others. Um, and at the time, you know, you don't maybe think too much, uh, about that, but it makes me think fondly of my days as a student here, quite fondly. And, uh, it makes me recognize that a life in the field of education for myself is an incredibly fulfilling life to live. Uh, and so Who Taught You is, um, is something that, it it, again, is new and, um, and we're trying to promote it. Well, uh, the Just Jump Films has contacted me and wants to come and have Plainview Public Schools be part of their documentary. Because they're looking to show what public education really is in most schools across the nation, particularly in most schools in rural areas and in rural Nebraska, where parents support public education, support teachers, teachers are still, you know, respected and admired. Facilities are maintained and modernized and and kept well, and students are are, for the most part, uh, happy and ambitious and positive and are experiencing something that is gonna propel them into their future. Okay? That's really the case, probably, in an overwhelming majority of schools. And they wanna capture that. Uh, and so they're gonna come to Plainview on Friday. And, uh, we're gonna arrange for them to talk to some teachers, talk to some students, capture some videos. Now, I do have to put out, um, uh, a release statement to our families, and so that'll be coming out. Uh, so we're just gonna ask our families, you know, and this is something like, you know, okay, can we use your kid's picture in the paper if it's captured or on the, on our social media? And we've never had anybody say, you know, I, but this would be different because this is part of a national campaign. Um, and so we're gonna ask our families to, you know, allow, uh, their child's image. You know, they might be in a, you know, we're, we're not gonna go up and interview kids without parents' permission. Okay? But they may be in a classroom, uh, capturing some video of our teachers doing what they do on a daily basis, which will be, very powerful to some people around the world because they don't really understand that this is really, uh, what education is supposed to be and what teachers are, should be experiencing and are experiencing with students when they receive board support, family support, administration support. So this is kind of a neat deal in a, in a, a way to kind of spotlight our little gem of a school. And they're up and down the highway, little gems, schools are up and down, but they ask to come and visit us. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, this is who taught you dot org. And, uh, they'll be here, uh, into the basketball game. They wanna capture school activity in a small-town gymnasium on a Friday night. When we just so happen to have three hundred little dancers who are gonna be here too. Uh, so boy, they're gonna get, they're gonna get it. So, and and we'll let folks know, uh, and our friends from Loomfield who are coming, okay, there's gonna be a, a, a film crew here. Here's what they're about. You know, just so so folks are aware. Um, but I wanted to bring that to your attention and I am certainly proud to support them and to have them, uh, want us to be part of of their documentary.
So you said you had to get permission from parents. Is that gonna include kids from Loomfield at the ball game and that kind of thing?
No, uh, because, I mean, you, you have an activity, you've got social media and everything else there right now. So because once, but you go into a classroom, that's a little bit of a different, uh, expectation for parents.
So you'll have to have one basically for every student?
Yeah. So we'll have to do a little bit of work. And as we determine their schedule on Friday, where they, uh, can and can't go, or they do have capability to potentially, if they need to, if they capture something, they're like, that's amazing, we gotta have it. But this one in the background, uh, family didn't release, well, they put the whole cloud over their face, you know, maybe so. Uh, but I'll let them work that out. And so, um, so we'll try to, uh, be prepared for them on Friday. So you'll see them here Friday, uh, if you come, uh, to the, to the basketball game. Update on, uh, your age fact project. We got, we gotta provide some new balance dampers in the unit that that services the FCS room and the high school office. They know, they believe they know what they need to do to fix that little bit of irritation problem with the flow of air into that section. The transformer is still, uh, scheduled to go online over, um, over spring break because they gotta shut the power down in the whole building for, uh, multiple days. So, uh, that will be, uh, between the ninth and the twelfth of March, still scheduled for that. Wouldn't be surprised if all, if something happens and it's gonna have to be engine. Wouldn't surprise me, but we're still on schedule to have the, because we're still running on an old transformer. All this is running on an old transformer. Boiler's up and working and providing the steam heat to the nineteen-twenty building. The old old locker rooms used to be hot and musty because they got that steam heat from the other boiler which was shut down. They're now a little cooler now. Um, they've been hot and musty for seven years.
So you're gonna show us that pie to the face?
That they know. Uh, I don't have that.
It's on the website.
It is.
It is.
It's on YouTube, probably not on the website.
Well, if you really.
I have video clips.
Oh, the wife has video. Is that what?
No, 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 not the wife. That's for us.
I thought that was.
We'll be starting somewhere. There's some stills. So, yeah, good job, kids. Jen, awesome. Uh, her mom makes a mean chocolate pie. What a waste. So, I mean, look at this expression right here. Look at this daughter who's about to be drowned.
That was a kiss fight. Of course, it was kiss fight.
No, uh, we know entries, no workman's hour claims.
Did you get her back?
Oh, yes.
So, anyway, that was, that was fun. That's a, uh, just a unique experience for, for kids to, to enjoy. So no meetings out of district since last meeting. There's our enrollment summary, uh, vacation and sick balance.
Next meeting, do we meet in the library? What is it?
Um, that's, that's obviously up to you. We, we, we've done both, uh, February meeting where we have a lunch meeting, uh, and noon meeting.
I think that's normally when we did it, wasn't it, February?
It'll be fantastic.
You guys be all right with that? The meeting next month?
Purpose is to eat lunch in the lunchroom, you know, right?
Yeah. At one time we used to want sort of whole school bucket things that needed to be worked on or fixed or whatever.
So it'll be the thirteenth of February?
I don't, I don't think we'll be eating here last year. I'd love to come and be here.
Yeah.
I, I think just myself and my.
Come at eleven thirty to eat, maybe.
Not if he was able to.
This is good for you to school.
They'll, they'll let you have two sandwiches.
We'll play on that.
We'll do lunch, four o'clock meeting?
All right. What do you think for you now?
One now.